Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the regular Half Moon Bay City Council meeting of September 6, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. All council members and staff will only participate via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph and Brown Act, allowing teleconferencing during a proclaimed state of emergency when local officials have recommended social distancing. This is AB 361. The purpose of the bill was to provide the safest environment for the public, elected officials and staff, while allowing for continued operation of the government in public participation during the COVID-19 pandemic. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation is available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature and will be called upon and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. The meeting will also be streamed on Channel 27 on Pacific Coast TV and on Facebook at www.facebook.com/cityofhalfmoonbay, all one word. You can also join by phone at 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 955-3561-4263. If joining by phone, you can use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. And could we have an explanation now of how to access the Spanish interpretation feature? Is there somebody here to do that?
Good evening. My name is Alfred Solerzano, the Assistant City Clerk. To access the Spanish interpretation portion on the bottom of your screen, there is a globe. On that globe, you will click on it and it will give you access to hear the meeting in Spanish.
And Nicholas Vuskovich will also be providing Spanish interpretation this evening. Can I have a roll call, please?
Okay, council member, council member Rorback?
Here.
Council member Jimenez?
Here.
Council member Brownstone?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pendles?
Here.
And Mayor Riddick?
Here. We're now moving on to public forum. If you wish to speak on any item on the consent calendar or items that are not on the consent calendar or the regular meeting agenda, you can raise your hand and they'll be called down to speak and you can unmute yourself. Do we have any hands raised at this moment?
We do from Rosio Ávila. So.
Good evening, Rosio.
Hola, buenas tardes. Se escucha?
Si, la podemos seguir.
Okay. Ah, gracias por estar de nuevo aquí y por escucharnos, por estar siempre nosotros luchando por lo que necesitamos, que son las viviendas justas.
It's somebody trying to translate for her.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you for listening to us and listening to our request for fair housing.
Necesitamos que el consejo haga algo porque es una gran necesidad que estamos sufriendo. Ustedes saben lo importante que es para nosotros estar aquí en Half Moon Bay.
We need the council to take heed of our speech because you know that it's very hard for us to be here living in Half Moon Bay.
Necesitan ustedes como comunidad aquí en Half Moon Bay, saben que necesitan la mano de obra de todos los trabajadores esenciales.
As a community of Half Moon Bay, you know that you are needing this specialized work that we provide as essential workers.
Así que también así como ustedes nos necesitan a nosotros, nosotros necesitamos que el consejo de la ciudad nos apoye y nos ayude para las viviendas de bajos ingresos para todos.
The same way that you need us, we need you in order to receive the support, in order to get the fair housing that we need for our families.
Y vamos a seguir estando presentes, vamos a seguir con nuestras marchas, vamos a seguir estando en las juntas y pidiendo lo que necesitamos porque es una gran necesidad, la vivienda accesible para todo.
We are going to continue in our marches and we are going to continue requesting the fair housing because it's a great need for our families.
Gracias.
Thank you.
We do have next speaker Carolina Carboja.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Eh, como decía mi compañera.
As my companion was saying.
Estamos aquí por una lucha.
We are here just without a request with a fight.
Queremos que ustedes sean conscientes.
We want you to be conscious.
Que la población latina.
That the Latin population.
Somos los que movemos a este pueblo.
We are the ones that are moving this town.
Nosotros trabajamos en sus tiendas.
We are working in your stores.
En sus hoteles.
In your hotels.
En sus restaurantes.
Your restaurants.
Limpiamos sus casas.
We clean your houses.
Hacemos sus jardines.
We do your yards.
Muchos de nosotros atendemos a sus hijos.
Many of us are just taking care of your kids.
Es triste que no nos crean importantes.
It is very sad that we are not considered as important.
También somos seres humanos.
We are also human beings.
También tenemos necesidades.
We also have needs.
También pagamos impuestos.
We also pay our taxes.
No pedimos una casa gratis.
We are not requesting a free home.
Pedimos una casa accesible para todos.
We are asking for affordable housing for all of us.
No tenemos un buen salario.
We don't have good salaries.
Para poder optar a comprar una casa.
In order to be able to buy a house.
Pero solicitamos.
But we are requesting.
Que nos generen casas accesibles para nosotros y nuestros hijos.
If you can generate accessible housing for us and our kids.
Estamos haciendo marchas para llamar su atención.
We are doing these walk and marches in order to call for attention.
Queremos que sepan que estamos aquí.
We want you to know that we are here.
Somos personas esenciales en la comunidad.
We are essential peoples in our community.
Por favor, escúchenos.
Please listen to us.
Presten atención a nuestra necesidad.
Pay attention to our needs.
Y nosotros también ayudaremos a la comunidad.
We are also going to help the community.
No queremos ser carga para nadie.
We don't want to be a load for anybody.
Solo queremos una vivienda accesible para todos.
We only request and we want accessible housing for all of us.
Muchas gracias y esperemos que atiendan nuestro llamado.
Thank you and we hope that you can pay attention and listen to our call.
Next speaker we have is Julia Raposa. Julia, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I'm going to be blunt about a few things I've been concerned about since I've come to this town and thinking about. I think we need to use more direct and less polite vocabulary. It's not essential workers, it's exploited workers. These are people that break their backs and they're not compensated with a living wage. And to create housing where one cannot accumulate generational wealth perpetuates the injustice. There are alternative models available being practiced by nearby communities by having a land trust where a nonprofit organization holds on to the value of the land. It can allow low-income workers to accumulate wealth and become owners of the housing that they will live in. Because they don't own the land, there's a trust so that the next generation who purchases that property must also be in a certain wage scale, but they are able to build equity. Failure to allow these workers, these dignified workers, to accumulate equity is to continue to exploit them. A second thing that I want to call attention to, and I've sent you many emails about, is this, it's very concerning to me that any money is being spent to further research 13 acres of synthetic turf that no one wants. I've talked to the people that allegedly, according to your report, supported the synthetic turf, which was all of four people, and they no longer want it. The dog park people don't want it. You need to, the survey that was done by your development agency did not ask anyone about the $4.85 million worth of synthetic turf, nor the additional taking of eight acres. And I'm concerned about the development of this town rather than being concerned with developing something that would make sense like ecotourism is just looking for quick turnover and revenues that are generated by hotels without looking at the business practices which create larger pools of exploited workers. You might want to use the social niceties of calling them essential workers. They are exploited. Thank you.
I don't see any more speakers.
Okay then, we're bringing it back to proclamations and presentations.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I'm really sorry, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. I'm wondering if we can be designated into the interpreter booth so we may begin interpreting for the members of the public. Because currently as we stand, we're not in the interpreter booth.
Nicholas was doing some interpretation. Are you saying that it wasn't going across? Not hearing you, Victor.
I think they've been moved to the interpretation booth now, so I think we're in a good spot.
All right. Do you have anything to add, Victor? At this time? Our first proclamation is for Hispanic Heritage Month and Elisa Acosta is going to present that.
Hi, good evening, I'm the Mayor and council members, thank you. It is great being with all of you this warm evening to present the Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. This observation started as Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968, but expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month in 1988. The celebration starts on September 15 to mark the Independence Day of El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua and Costa Rica, followed by Mexico on the 16, Chile on the 18, and Belize on the 21st. It serves as an official celebration of individuals whose ancestry can be traced back to Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean and Spain. Would like to take this opportunity to highlight the challenges Hispanics and Latinos have overcome throughout the years and most importantly, the contributions it made to our society and culture. According to the 2020 census, people of Hispanic origin are the largest minority in the US and in California, they constitute 39% of the population. In Half Moon Bay alone, they represent 28.2% of our residents. And in that spirit, I will read the proclamation now. Victor and Nicholas, please note, I will read the proclamation in Spanish after as well. The proclamation reads, whereas from the early sellers of the new world to those reaching for the American dream today, Hispanics have shaped and strengthened our country. And whereas the month of September 15 to October 15 was designated as Hispanic Heritage Month by the United States Congress in 1988. And whereas Hispanic, Latino, Latina, or Latinx individuals represent a wide range of nationalities and backgrounds, including Mexican, Puerto Rican, South or Central American, or other cultures or origins regardless of race. And whereas September 15th was chosen to commemorate the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua, and September 16 for Mexico's independence. And whereas this year's theme is Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation. And whereas the impact of Hispanic culture and centuries-old tradition are manifested in our state's customs and laws. And whereas, like so many Americans, Hispanics and Latinos have overcome great obstacles to persevere and flourish in every sector of our society. And whereas Hispanic Americans continue to make important contributions to our society and American government, business, agriculture, armed forces, commerce, education, the arts, science and sports. And whereas Hispanic Americans are one of the fastest-growing communities in this country and represent 62.1 million, or 18.7% of US residents, 39% of California's population, which signifies the nation's largest Hispanic population, and 28.2% of the population of the city of Half Moon Bay. Now therefore, be it known that the City Council of Half Moon Bay declares September 15, 2022 to October 15, 2022 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Half Moon Bay. I will proceed to read the proclamation in Spanish now. Proclamación, considerando que desde los primeros pobladores del Nuevo Mundo hasta los que hoy alcanzan el sueño americano, los hispanos han modelado y fortalecido nuestro país. Y por cuanto, el mes de 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre fue designado como mes de la herencia hispana por el Congreso de los Estados Unidos en 1988. Y considerando que las personas hispanas y latinas representan una amplia gama de nacionalidades y orígenes, incluidas las culturas y orígenes mexicanos, puertorriqueños, sudamericanos y centroamericanos, independientemente de la raza. Y por cuanto, el 15 de septiembre fue elegido para conmemorar el aniversario de independencia de cinco países latinoamericanos, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras y Nicaragua. Y el 16 de septiembre por la independencia de México. Y por cuanto, el tema de este año es Unidos, inclusión para una nación más fuerte. Y por cuanto, el impacto de la cultura hispana y las tradiciones centenarias se manifiestan en las costumbres y leyes de nuestro estado. Y por cuanto, los hispanoamericanos continúan haciendo importantes contribuciones a nuestra sociedad en el gobierno estadounidense, los negocios, la agricultura, las fuerzas armadas, el comercio, la educación, las artes, las ciencias y los deportes. Y por cuanto, los hispanoamericanos son una de las comunidades de más rápido crecimiento en este país y representan 62.1 millones, o el 18.7% de los residentes de Estados Unidos. El 39% de la población de California que representa la población hispana más grande del país. Y el 28.2% de la población de la ciudad de Half Moon Bay. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Half Moon Bay declara el 15 de septiembre de 2022 al 15 de octubre de 2022 como mes de la herencia hispana de 2022 en la ciudad de Half Moon Bay. For 2022, would like to present this proclamation to brothers Martín Acosta Gutiérrez and Jesús Acosta Gutiérrez, who have been living in Half Moon Bay for 30 and 44 years respectively. They have greatly contributed to our community by dedicating their lives to farm work on the coast. Gracias, Martín y Jesús. ¿Les gustaría decir algo ahora? I think they might be a little camera shy.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's go.
Oh, gracias.
Yeah.
Gracias.
Thanks. I love you guys. Oh, but let's give her a lot of gracias, muchas gracias for all the sana si. Esperemos que que se haga algo así como ir para las viviendas y todo eso. Y gracias, Te amo.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias por lo que estamos haciendo. Esperemos que se haga las cosas.
Se ayuden a los. Tanto que hemos trabajado, tantos años.
Que se haga algo lo que me daba.
Gracias. Thank you so much, Elisa. We're moving on to the next proclamation. Suicide Prevention Month. Tonight, we have a proclamation before the City Council to declare September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Month and September 4th through the 10th as Suicide Prevention Week, which coincides with September 10th as World Suicide Prevention Day. This is a critical issue throughout every community in the country, including in San Mateo County and right here on the coast side. By passing this proclamation, we are helping spread the message within our community that suicide can be prevented, there is support, there are resources to help, and there are people who care. It saddens me that in 2020, 82 people died by suicide in San Mateo County, which is a 33% increase from 2019. Calls to San Mateo County's Star Vista Crisis Hotline have increased by 10% in the last year, up to over 12,000, which is likely due to the special 988 crisis number which debuted this past July. To me, that increase in calls also highlights that people in crisis and their loved ones are looking for help and that our community's support can make all the difference. Half Moon Bay's Crisis Assistant Response and Evaluation Services Program, or CARES, is a local tool that we feel can also contribute to suicide prevention by responding to health-related 9/11 calls with teams trained in addressing suicidal ideation and other mental health distress and concerns. Half Moon Bay also joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative where mayors of the 20 cities in the county share the mission of promoting awareness of and access to mental health resources for everyone in our communities. The 2022 September Suicide Prevention Month theme is Take Action for Suicide Prevention. Thriving at all ages, and it should be a call to action for all of us. It's important for our community members to support each other. I'm encouraging our own community to visit cdc.gov/suicide to learn more and to give ourselves some of the tools to identify and prevent potential suicidal behavior. Everyone in our community can have a role in suicide prevention. This proclamation helps put a spotlight on that role. Now, do we have someone who can read that in Spanish?
Mayor Riddick, it was translated in Spanish from your reading in English on our Spanish channel.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. And do we have a speaker here this evening on the subject?
Yes, we do. We have Mr. Chris Rasmussen.
Welcome, Chris.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. City council members, city staff, residents of Half Moon Bay. My name is Chris Rasmussen and I'm the vice chair of the Seminole County Behavioral Health Commission. We just changed our name, so it's a little easier now, Behavioral Health Commission. I'd like to thank the city of Half Moon Bay for proclaiming September 2022 Suicide Prevention Month. And as you said, we're promoting this year's theme of Take Action for Suicide Prevention to support thriving at all ages. All are encouraged to take action for suicide prevention by recognizing the importance of strengthening resilience and protective factors in physical and emotional wellness throughout the lifespan at different stages of life. There's many ways you guys can support us and Suicide Prevention Month, promote purple and teal, which are the national colors for Suicide Prevention Month. You can save on your phone the numbers to the Seminole County Star Vista Crisis Hotline or the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. And we're also hosting several virtual events and in-person events hosted by our community partners. And there's more information at semitohelp.org/suicidepreventionmonth. And I just wanted to add, we are recognizing Jeff Essex of El Centro tomorrow at our monthly commission meeting. He has been awarded the David Lewis Award, recognizing his outstanding contributions towards recovery. And the meeting is tomorrow at 6:00. The presentation will probably be somewhere around 4:30 and you're all invited to attend on Zoom. And thank you very much for recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you so much, Chris. Does anyone have any questions for Chris? Seeing none, I'll just say thanks again and good evening. Appreciate all you do.
All right, next is Mayor's announcements of community activities. And I do have one announcement. So this Saturday, September 10th, 12 to 5 p.m., will be the celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. And it's going to be at the Johnston House at the corner of Higgins Canyon Road and South Main Street. There will be plenty of food and activities, fall afternoon, and presentations from a variety of local groups and nonprofit organizations. Event parking is available in the field adjacent to the Johnston House and complimentary shuttle service will be available from downtown Half Moon Bay. Shuttle stops are at the Half Moon Bay Library and Our Lady of the Pillow Church. Limited seating is available for the main stage, there will be music. So bring camping chairs or blankets and well-behaved dogs on the luchas are allowed. So this should be a wonderful event. We're honored that they're celebrating right here in Half Moon Bay. So come on down and bring it back. Now moving on to city manager and staff updates to council.
Mayor, there was one item before that, the report out from the sessions.
Oh, yes. Next time, please put a space between the items.
Yes, I see that there was a run-on phrase there. There is, the council met in closed session earlier this evening and while there's no reportable action taken, I did just want to announce that there were two items discussed. An item, conference with real property negotiators regarding the property 20 Stone Pine Road. The city negotiators are the city manager and the city attorney. And the under negotiation were pricing terms, potential acquisition of easements for the John L. Carter Park Improvement Project. And second item was conference with the legal counsel, anticipated litigation regarding one potential case of initiation of litigation. No reportable action taken, but the council did provide direction regarding the real estate negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Matthew?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. We have a few items from staff to present tonight. I believe Veronica, you'll be sharing. Thank you.
I'm always so bad at this, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, now if you just go into presentation mode.
I always mess it up. There we go.
There we go. That looks perfect.
I taught her everything I know.
Thanks, Veronica. Yes, yes.
I should be better at this.
When you started here, you were great at it. When you started here, you were great at it, and John rubbed off on you, but it's perfect now. Thank you. Next slide, please. I'll give the first update, which is just a notice for the community of an upcoming event. It is our world-famous Summer Zen Music Festival. This is a really great event that started in two thousand and eighteen and kind of caps off the summer season and our music for the summertime. Normally, this event is held at Carter Park, which, as you all know, is currently being remodeled into a really great outdoor performance art venue. And so this year, Summer Zen will be held in downtown Half Moon Bay. And we're really excited about it. We've got a great layout, and we think it's going to be a great event. And as you see, there's two flyers, and that's because it is two events in one. So at the south end of Main Street, near the intersection of Miramonte Street, will be the main stage. And you can see the four bands that will be playing. There's a variety of music from R and B and soul music to folk music and old-time rock and roll. And then the headliners are local and Bay Area favorite Native Elements playing reggae and ska music. They always draw a big crowd, and they're a lot of fun. Additionally, at the Mac Dutra Stage, we'll have our Kids Zone, where Andy Z, who's a very popular kids performer, will do several sets throughout the day. And of course, it'll be surrounded with a lot of fun activities for kids. In the main area, we'll have several of our nonprofits available. They'll be sharing information. There will be activities. And all of it, as always, is free to the community. It's a really great opportunity to gather, enjoy music, enjoy the outdoors, and celebrate the end of summer together. And so we invite you to come down, patronize our businesses, go to our restaurants and buy some food, and really just enjoy a day of great music. The music starts at noon and ends at seven P M. And that's on Saturday, September twenty-fourth. That's two weeks from now, two and a half weeks from now in downtown Half Moon Bay. And we're really grateful to all of our partners, the libraries, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Rec for their support. And a special shout-out to our recreation staff and our public works maintenance staff, who transform our downtown into this wonderful venue. And we hope to see many members of our community in attendance for this great event this year. Thank you. There we go. And Veronica, you're muted right now.
I'm just not, I'm just striking out today. I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Veronica Vostinak, your sustainability analyst. And I'm here today to give you some updates on our sustainability programs. So first, I just wanted to let you all know that our electric vehicle charging and solar panel reach code was approved by the C E C or the California Energy Commission on July thirteenth of this year. The council adopted this ordinance in December of last year, and we were waiting on C E C approval before it could become effective. So it's now effective. And as a reminder, this ordinance expands the requirements to increase EV charging in new residential buildings, solar on new commercial and hotel motel buildings, and energy storage readiness for new residential buildings. This ordinance will remain effective until the new building code is adopted. The twenty-twenty-two building code will be adopted later this year. And we expect that the building code will cover the solar panel portions and go beyond what we have here. But we'll have some new recommendations for you all regarding EV charging based on putting us a clean energies recommendations, which we use for this version of the code as well. Next, I just wanted to give a heads-up that on this past Friday, we sent some compliance letters to businesses regarding A B eighteen-twenty-six. A B eighteen-twenty-six requires that any businesses that produce at least two cubic yards of waste, regardless of the type of waste that is, they must arrange for organics or composting service. So these letters were sent out on Friday, and because of the council's foresight in looking at future requirements, the base level of service is free to all businesses, residential residents, and multifamily homes. So Republic is providing that assistance, so you just need to contact them to set up the service. And while they're there, they can also provide some free waste assessments to take a look at the waste that's being generated from various businesses and see if there's any potential for reducing your waste bill overall. So just letting you all know, if businesses haven't received it today, you can expect to see one in the next couple of days. On a much more exciting note, we have our Coastal Cleanup Day on September seventeenth, and this is statewide. And we're lucky enough to have four really amazing nonprofits that are sponsoring and serving as site captains at four of our beaches here in the city. So we have the Rotary Club of Half Moon Bay stationed at Dunes Beach. We have Pacific Beach Coalition at Pillar Point Harbor. We have Surf Rider at Poplar Beach, and we have Sea Hugger at Surfers Beach. There's some more information about where exactly to go and how to sign up or get parking passes on the city's website. So if you go on the city's sustainability page, there'll be more information. If you're looking to join one of these amazing nonprofits and clean up our beaches and waterways on the seventeenth. This is a little far out, but I figured while I'm here, I'll give a little save the date for the Fall Recycling Event. This event's always really popular. Each year, we've had, you know, a hundred, two hundred households every year. I want to make sure that people have a chance to go out. This year, our fall event will be on November fifth, and the event will be from nine A M. to twelve P M. at Smithfield. So if you're looking to do any e-waste recycling, document shredding, or you want to get some compost for your fall gardens, we'll see you there on November fifth. And I just want to give a shout-out to Republic Services, who sponsors all of these events for residents every, twice a year. And last, we have a lot of exciting things going on in sustainability right now. I wanted to let you all know that we are looking to launch a reusable cup pilot. Oh, Copy Reusables received some funding by the San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, and they chose the Half Moon Bay and Unincorporated Coastside as one of the locations. They wanted to try this out. So we'll be here on the coast side, and in the city of San Mateo, there will be cold cups and hot cups available at any participating cafes, where anybody who wants to use it can sign up for a ten-dollar membership fee, and that membership fee you pay once, and you have unlimited access to the program. And you can use cups and return them at participating cafes for free. So we're looking for a tentative launch in October, and we're currently recruiting coastside cafes. So if you, if this sounds like a program that's interesting to you all, and you have a cafe that you visit that you would like them to participate, I encourage you to let them know. We're looking to start with about five or six cafes again this October. So that's my sustainability updates, and unless we have any questions, I will pass it off to Jill.
Thank you, Veronica. A rice mayor has a question.
Sure.
Yes, thank you, Veronica. This is an exciting program. I don't understand what the ten-dollar fee is all about. What does that get you?
Sure. So if you're looking to participate in the program as a customer of a cafe, you pay ten dollars one time. So you, and then that gives you access to an app where you can go and borrow these cups at participating cafes. So you pay ten dollars once, and you'll have unlimited access to using these cups that you would use, and then you can return dirty to the cafe, and they will wash it and make the next available for you to use. So, yeah.
Thanks a lot. Great programs.
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Jill Ikas, your community development director tonight. I just am here to make sure everyone is aware of the status of the Hyatt Hotel Project Review Process. Next slide, please. This is a project that's been in planning review for quite some time. Currently, the draft environmental impact report is out for circulation, and that will, that sixty-day period will end next Tuesday. So I'm here tonight to encourage folks to make comments. Do note that it is alternative two in the E I R that is being proposed by the applicant. We have tried to make that very clear in all of our materials, and this is something that the applicant has evolved to over the course of this review. So if there's any questions about that, the applicant is proposing the hundred-and-two-room hotel project now with some other additional development proposals, including some residential units on the north side of Seymour Street. Next slide, please. So to get more information, we have maintained a website for this project. The project webpage can be accessed through the Community Development Department's webpage. And the most recent Planning Commission meeting on August ninth for this project is anybody who wants to read a history or take a look at any of the other reports that went out on this project, that August ninth report is really meant to be helpful for folks. It has all the links to everything that's ever been put out before on this. And to meet with city staff, we are available to speak with you. Last Wednesday, I went down to Main Street Park. This is one of our flip chart sheets. We wanted to make sure that the folks in that community meeting knew what was coming, and it's very close to their residences. And so this was really important. We got some great input, and we'll make sure to pass that on to our consultants. And my last slide. So to receive notifications about this project, the city clerks sign up for getting notified. There is a Hyatt mailing list, and we have several hundred folks are signed up to it already. And we would encourage everyone who's interested in this to simply sign up there, and they'll receive every public notice that we put out on this project. And we're receiving comments. They can be presented in person at City Hall. They can come through the mail. But most people are sending them through email. And the project email address, hyatthotel@hmbcity.com, is a City of Half Moon Bay email address. I'm clarifying that because we've had an individual who wanted to know if that email address was for the actual Hyatt company, and it is not. This is, this is our email address. Your staff is reading all of these emails and preparing to have responses to them when the comment period is over. And once again, the deadline for these comments, September thirteenth, five o'clock P M. This is specifically focused on the environmental impact report. And I will just, I think it's important to remember, it's never too late to participate. If someone doesn't make the comments at that point, there will be future hearings, and we want people to attend. We've been making sure to have Spanish interpretation at all of these meetings as well. So thank you for letting us touch base with you on this, and I get the word out on the Hyatt proposal. Thanks.
Very helpful. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So we wanted to provide some elections information again for anyone who may have missed it over the summer. First, at the end of August, the city council did adopt a resolution which appointed Robert Brownstone and Deborah Penrose to their respective districts due to them being the sole nominees after the close of the nomination period. So for this upcoming election on November eighth, the only city council district that will hold an election is District Four. There are three candidates, Bill Ballson, David Oblovy, and Debbie Reddick. And on our website, you can find their candidate statements and other information. We also are working on finalizing packets that will be sent to each of the districts. So if you are a registered voter within one of our five districts, you will be receiving information shortly that will explain a lot of this in more detail and kind of give you a guide as to what your personal city council elections will look like for the next ten years. So for this election, the county will be holding an eleven-day vote center at the Emergency Operations Center, which is near Shoreline Station and the Sheriff's Substation right there on Kelly Avenue. That will be open October twenty-ninth through November eighth, nine to five each day, except for November eighth, Election Day itself. It will be open from seven A M. to eight P M. This is an all-male ballot election. Ballots will start being mailed out October tenth. So look for those, the middle two weeks of October in your mailboxes. And next slide, please. And then the weekend of the October fifteenth through October nineteenth, the county will also be holding a mobile vote center at the Half Moon Bay Airport, and that'll be open from nine to five each of those four days. Ballot drop boxes will be located inside the New Leaf Market at City Hall in the parking lot on the side of City Hall, and then at the senior center, but for senior residents only. And if you have not yet registered to vote, there is still time. You can register at registrativote.ca.gov, or you can go into the mobile vote center or the eleven-day vote center and register to vote there. And for anyone with high school students, pre-registration starts at sixteen years old. And next slide, please. And then also wanted to announce that we're very excited to hold our Elections Night Out event again. And this will be held on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, at the library from five to eight. And we'll have various nonprofit organizations there showcasing their work, departments from the city showcasing current projects. There will be a lot of information, and it's more just about getting together and having dinner with your neighbors. And if you want to drop off your ballot, we'll have a ballot drop box there as well. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Jessica. Any questions for staff reelections? Seeing none, let's move on to the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items? If not, could we entertain a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar? Okay, I'll take care of it. I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item one A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item one B, reradification of resolution to continue holding public meetings remotely. Item one B, receipt of legislative position letter. Item one C, adoption of a resolution rejecting all bid proposals received for the Main Street Safety Improvement Project, C I P Project Number one zero zero nine, with authorizing staff to re-advertise the project. Item one D, Highway One Safety and Operational Improvement Project North, C I P Project five thirty-eight, construction funding agreement with San Mateo County Transportation Agency.
I'll second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rarba?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Reddick?
Yes. Moving on to item three, resolutions and staff reports. Item three A, acceptance of funding from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative Donor Advised Fund, an advised fund of Silicon Valley Community Foundation for coastside recovery efforts related to regenerative agriculture, farmworker support, and digital infrastructure.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council and community.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council and community. My name is Karen Decker. I'm your Community and Economic Vitality Manager. I am joined here this evening by Erica Wood, your Economic Development Consultant. And we are here this evening to share some exciting updates on the Coastside Recovery Initiative. I will be kicking things off, and then Erica will be covering the second half of our presentation. We will then pause for comments and questions, and then we'll ask you to consider a recommendation to receive grant funding from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. It is a lengthy recommendation, so when the time comes for your consideration, I'm happy to pull that back up on the screen for your reference. It is a lengthy recommendation, so when the time comes for your consideration, I'm happy to pull that back up on the screen for your reference. Okay, so jumping right into our goals. In whenever we approach or talk about this work, we always go back to where we started, which is being really clear on what we're trying to achieve. And that is to help the community recover from the pandemic while advancing strategies to create a more resilient economy. And the Coastside Recovery Initiative's commitment to equity, to how the work gets done. That the gains be felt by people at the local level. These are all guiding principles that I've spoken about in previous presentations and continue to open this way with intention, with purpose, because they're that important. And these principles shape the work and they have remained steady. Since the release of the report in March, staff has received really positive feedback. Some in ways that, that we had hoped and others that were unexpected. I, I was just thinking about this when I was putting the presentation together. And at a meeting with a potential donor recently, Erica and I noticed that the recommendations page of the report was tabbed. And it, it was, it felt so good because other people in the community who have not looked at the report as closely as those who, of us who helped compile it. This document is being referenced and it's being picked up and referred to in a meaningful way. And I've heard that from regional elected leaders and their chiefs of staff. They, they know about it, they reference it, and it's, it's so reassuring to hear. I also had a, a local gallery owner approach me about a month ago. And she's setting up an artist in residence. And she reached out to say that she's structuring part of her application process for her residence around the Coastside Recovery Initiative recommendations. So it's just so nice to hear these really delightful and sometimes unexpected ways in which the information is being used by the community, which was one of the main reasons for launching this work. We've received affirmation and inquiries about the process and about the recommendations themselves. And a big part of broadcasting these recommendations is to secure funding so that these can go from ideas to actual component projects that are realized. And Erica is going to talk more about funding awards in just a moment. I also hope to be, the initiative, it hopes to be a model for other communities that are looking to launch their own economic recovery efforts. And we're so delighted to be invited to present at an annual conference organized by the Municipal Management of Northern California. It's a common government association and this year's annual theme is rooted in resiliency. And in October, staff will be sharing the process and the report and the outcomes from the Coastside Recovery Initiative. And I'm so excited to potentially inspire other communities to advance this work. Relationships matter, and that is definitely the case here. These are just a few in a list of many who have worked with the city and are close partners like the Chamber of Commerce. We would be nowhere without our original diverse multi-sector recovery task force who really shaped the initiative's focus areas and the recommendations. We've really deepened relationships locally, but also established regional relationships. One example that I want to kind of hone in on because these aren't necessarily in order, but generally things were kicked off by the task force. Some great partners emerged as we were solidifying the recommendations and pursuing funding. We know that vocational pathways and educational partners cannot be talked apart from, talked about apart from economic recovery efforts. But the bullet that I really want to focus in on here is the Economic Advancement Center cohort. This isn't a really good example, I think, of where we can benefit from building on some best practices. There's an Economic Advancement Center that's currently running out of the city of South San Francisco. And they had experienced great success with job seekers and with entrepreneurs and supporting small businesses. That best practices are coming out of that region. And the city of Half Moon Bay has an opportunity to take a lead agency role and collaborate with the city of South San Francisco and North Furox. In order to share learnings and inform our programming and our program evaluation. Erica will talk a little bit more about the center in just a moment, but that's one of the examples of how we can really lean on what other jurisdictions are doing. But still really never lose sight of that local relevance. Sometimes what works in another community will or will not work here on the coast side and vice versa. And that's all kind of part of that contributing to that body of learning that I mentioned earlier, like presenting at that upcoming conference. We recognize with the Coastside Recovery Initiative that additional capacity was going to be necessary. And that informed a set of structure and resource recommendations. And when I say structure and resource recommendations, I mean separate from the recommendations in the report. And I just want to commend and thank the city council for continuing to value this work. We saw an opportunity to take two teams that were working within the city. Our community services staff, our economic recovery efforts, and really bring them together for greater coordination and efficiency. Earlier in public comments, a point was made about essential workers being essential to the economy, but needing to be able to access affordable housing. So we don't see the ability of our nonprofits and our safety net service recipients to thrive, being separate and apart from our economic resiliency agenda. So I'm just really honored to manage this new division. And don't be surprised if you see me and Jolisa Acosta out talking to local businesses or neighbors at National Night Out or Make It Main Street. We love getting away from our computers and out in the community and I'm just really excited to continue the work. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Erica, who's going to share some really exciting news about investments.
Great, thanks Karen and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm, I'm delighted to be with you all this evening to share the great news. You know, Karen talked about new visibility and new capacity. It's also exciting that we have some new investments. And in my past professional role, which happened to be in philanthropy. When we were attempting to do big things and make big change, we had this mantra of, we start with understanding the data and needs. We get the right people talking about the data and those needs and that that will really pave the way for solutions and support. And this is exactly what we are seeing come to fruition right now. And that's evidenced by the list of investments that you see on the screen this evening to support implementation of recommendations. And this is just since the report has been released. So the investments range from the county's allocation of two point five million in federal ARPA funding. To support an exciting new center for job seekers and small businesses on the coast side. To the city's own commitment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support downtown revitalization through its capital improvement program. It's great to also see the diversity of the funding streams that are represented here and we hope to see more. In addition to the new investments, we're thrilled that Chan Zuckerberg Initiative has awarded us a significant grant. We started conversations with their Bay Area giving team last October and so pleased that that has resulted in an award of four hundred thousand. Which by the way, was a hundred and fifty thousand more than we had asked for. So incredibly generous. And it's exciting that these new funds will support new strategies. One of which is a farmworker cooperative through a newly established nonprofit known as Rancho San Benito. And that nonprofit is really aiming to address some of the historical inequities that have existed for black, indigenous. And farmworkers who are people of color that have really been priced out of land ownership. And, and being able to secure smaller, more affordable parcels. So Rancho San Benito is attempting to change that by assigning small pots of, small plots of land to low income farmworkers to grow and sell their crops. While learning about aspects of farm operations and management and regenerative practices. The work will start with a cohort of twelve low income farmworkers who are already employed on our local farms. And the work will be carried out in various phases so that these essential workers can become independent farmers one day. The other opportunity is in the area of digital infrastructure. Karen and I were very surprised when CZI mentioned that they were interested in supporting this work. And you know, I have to give a lot of credit to Matthew, who has been the city's point person and really understanding what is happening. At the state and the county level with efforts to strengthen the digital infrastructure. And it's fantastic that the state has support, supported some new funding and significant legislation. That's going to facilitate the build out of eight thousand miles worth of new middle mile network, particularly in rural areas like ours. And that's wonderful, but this strategy that CZI is interested in is really taking care of the human needs around access to digital devices. Internet connectivity, while helping people really gain skills and awareness and build their confidence to be empowered users of technology. Whether that's to find a new job, learn new skills, or access public benefits, or even be able to help their children in school. So I'll just make a statement here that, you know, we know that they wanted to support us because there was a plan. We had our Coastside Recovery Initiative recommendations and a level of readiness which was apparent. And I used to head up grant making at one of the world's largest community foundations. And it was very rare for us to make a grant of this size. And I think it's rare to see other local philanthropies make a grant of this size. So it's hugely significant and something that I hope the council is proud of. So then to wrap up with some insights, as we look back at what has been accomplished and look toward the future. You know, one, one thing is clear is that big change never happens in one fell swoop. It's about an accumulation of successes and changes over time to generate momentum that then leads to the breakthrough. And that's something that I've heard referenced as the flywheel effect. So we're starting to see the flywheel effect with our Coastside Recovery Initiative work. And we also have known that the issues are too large for one agency or one jurisdiction to address on its own. And that we really need coordinated action and impact among a variety of organizations and players to get us to the next economy. And again, compliments to the council for its leadership in supporting that. We have held local needs squarely in our line of sight and heartbreaking to hear the public comments at the beginning of the meeting tonight. They keep us accountable. But we've also been able to capitalize on some of the important regional connections and assets that exist and we're seeing that bear fruit. Chan Zuckerberg Initiative is certainly one of those. And now being in their portfolio, I think only helps to elevate this work overall. So we're optimistic that our recommendations are fundable, that philanthropy represents one of the many grant streams that we are tapping. In order to activate the recommendations and move toward a more equitable, vibrant and resilient future. So I think with that, we are open to questions.
Council members, do you have questions for staff and our consultants? It's wonderful work. It's very exciting. And yes, planning good. I'm a fan of it. Vice Mayor?
I don't have any questions. I am just so thrilled with the work that our city has done and that you have been a leader, Erica and Karen, in, in accomplishing. And kudos go to you. I am so tickled about this grant. I really think it's the beginning of bearing fruit on the work that you've done. So thank you. Thank you.
I would like to echo what the Vice Mayor just said. The reason that Joaquin Jimenez had to recuse himself from the Rancho San Benito. Item was that he himself is working really hard to execute that. And I think that's really a, a statement about what the community, the council cares about. I'm really impressed that CZI thought that we were worthy of four hundred grand. We are. And the Rancho San Benito project, I think, is amazing. This digital navigator, I just found out that word this afternoon myself. It just means people who help other people gain access to the internet. I think a lot of them will be working through Coastside Hope and Puente. And make low, low income people get access to the internet. Through both software and, and hardware. The Comcast will give you a, a good deal if you're a, a recipient of a, one of many safety net programs. And you know, the internet is really a lifeline and we all know that. And many people are right now, either because of ignorance or lack of money or knowledge, are not aware of the opportunity. So I think both of those CZI grants are really important for helping people who need help. So I, I applaud everybody who worked hard to get that grant. And certainly going to support accepting the four hundred thousand dollars. So thank you all.
Thanks, Harvey. Do we have members of the public who would wish to comment?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just have one legal point on behalf of Councilmember Jimenez before we go to public comment. I meant, I, I mentioned it to him earlier that I would help explain why the, why he did choose to recuse this evening. I was, I was too slow with, with unmuting myself. But as Councilwoman Rarback referred to, Councilwoman Jimenez founded Rancho San Benito and is on the advisory board. And that is one of the organizations that would be an intended recipient of these grant funds. So under state ethics law, as he is in an official position with that organization. Those state laws do require recusal and I just wanted to make that point on the record. It can be frustrating, I think, for folks who see his, his great work on behalf of nonprofits and then not able to vote in this context. But that is pursuant to, to state ethics law. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. I don't see any hands raised among the attendees.
No, no hands raised.
Okay, well, I'll bring it back to the council and see if somebody pipes up. I really love the slide showing the multiple investments. You know, what's really going on here is community building, right? We're building community strength and resilience by building connections between our nonprofit communities, government, business, volunteers. This is the kind of thing we need to be a, a stronger, more resilient community, community that can survive disasters. That can achieve successes, building social cohesion. I think it's super exciting and it's, it's what had to happen. And we took advantage of, you know, the COVID crisis to think creatively. And engage minds that were already, you know, active, city staff, consultant. You know, to bring it forward. So I, I just find the whole thing really exciting. I'm just tickled, you know, that we're doing this and just want to thank everyone. Robert, do you have any comments before we move on to a motion?
Well, I'm happy to make a motion, but I will say. I think a lot of this is the result of our, a long-term plan to build our acumen. In applying for writing and applying for grants. And it just, I think this just. Represents huge strides in, on our continuing journey to provide equity for our entire community. And so I'm delighted with the results and agree with what everyone else said, so. And I'm happy to make a motion. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to, one, accept grant funds by signing a grant agreement. The Silicon Valley Community Foundation for Coastside Recovery Efforts. Related to regenerative agriculture, farmworker support, and digital infrastructure in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. And two, to negotiate and execute sub-grantee agreements with local nonprofit service providers, not to exceed three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And three, to create the CZI grant fund, a special revenue fund, and make matching revenue and expenditure budget. and make matching revenue and expenditure budget amendments in the amount of $400,000.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rorback?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez is absent. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Ruttig?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Okay, we're moving on to item 3B. This is our last regular agenda item, and it's an agenda format review. It's been a while since we discussed how the agenda format was working for us.
I just want to make sure that we have Councilwoman Jimenez an opportunity to come back.
Mom back, Joaquin. Welcome back.
Just in case. Because is the city clerk sending him a text just in case he didn't?
I did.
I think so.
I'm back. Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations, Joaquin.
Yes, congratulations. Item 3B, agenda format review. So it's been a while since we changed the agenda last. And I just, you know, asked for it to be on the agenda to see if it's working for everybody. I've had some, you know, comments from members of the public, like, maybe we should have more public forum, like, you know, after the consent calendar or before we actually vote in the consent calendar. I don't think the person who suggested that is on this meeting. And I also had comments from people in the community wanting us to, you know, offer chat as part of our Zoom meetings. And staff is here to explain how that works. But mainly, it's just to check in with council members and members of the public. Is the format, you know, the right format? Is it working for us? And to just open it up to a discussion.
Mayor, to interrupt for a second, I'm looking at the attendees list, and there is a hand raised. I'm not sure what it was raised for, but I think it might have been for the last item. I believe it's for this item, Vice Mayor Penrose. Thank you.
So we can discuss a little bit and then play comment and...
That's fine.
Yeah. Anybody have any issues with it currently? Anything you'd like moved around? Harvey?
I attend the Midcoast Community Council meetings where the chat is enabled, and the format for Zoom is, gives all the members, not just the council members, their cameras are available. And I think that's a good idea. I think it leads to more of a sense of intimacy, that you're part of the group. I understand there's downsides to that, too, but I would advocate that. And as a minor issue, I'm always confused at the end of the meetings about the request for new agenda items versus report outs from individual council members. And it sounds somewhat trivial, but I think they should be listed separately. And lastly, I think one of my major contributions when I was mayor was to make sure that public forum be the first item. In those days, people could show up at the Ted Adcock Center, say their piece, and split. And that encouraged people not to have to sit around for the rest of the meeting. And I thought that was a really good idea. And I think we should make sure to continue the public forum as the first item. My comments.
Thank you, Harvey. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Rorback. I like the idea that the public can be seen during our Zoom meetings, that they can see each other. I think that would be maybe difficult to do, but I would like to see it done. In terms of public forum, I'm not sure that it's as critical with a Zoom meeting as it is when we're having our meetings in public, that people split, get to split. You know, they can also go away from their computer and come back when it's time for public forums. So I'm not, I don't care very much about that particular issue.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Well, I actually like the format that we have right now. I understand about being more inclusive about the community to bring in with a camera. But I think, you know, with some of the committee members, it just gives them the opportunity to be off-camera and not be shy and speak up. If we open up the chat, you know, destruction will happen. People will start reading the chat, no comments on the chat, and actually go with the meeting. So, I mean, like I say, I like the format that we personally have.
Thank you, Joaquin. Robert? Robert, you're muted.
Apologies. Yeah, I tend to agree with Joaquin. I like the format. I like people having a choice of being, you know, not necessarily having to see their face. It makes them more comfortable. I have a lot of mixed feelings about chat. I mean, I've also seen some meetings that Harvey's talked about, and, you know, the positive side is someone can answer a question, you know, from the public. On the other hand, there can be a lot of, you know, distracting, destructive kind of things going on. I mean, it's, you know, when we're meeting in person, yeah, sure, people can chat to their neighbor and stuff, but I think it can add just some comments that might be either inappropriate, and then you have to have someone who is looking after the chat and asking or reminding people to be civil. So I think we've gone along pretty well with that without it. I think people have always had the opportunity to contribute. I think because of Zoom access, we've actually had more participation than we've ever had than most in-person meetings, other than, you know, certain times where something very interesting or controversial came up, we could fill a room. But we do the same thing on Zoom. So I'd be cautious about adding the chat at this point.
Thank you, Robert. Could we take comments from John Olem?
Mr. Olem?
Thank you for having me. Before I forget to say it, you need to end all PowerPoint presentations. They need to be banned. They need to be removed from anybody's notion of having a public meeting and it being good practice to put in a PowerPoint presentation. I cannot stress enough how much I hate PowerPoint presentations and how much everybody hates PowerPoint presentations. You will not find anybody that likes a PowerPoint presentation. I will reiterate this at the end of my three minutes. Chat, I have seen it used at the Harbor District, and I can tell you those people at the Harbor District did not like people talking about them on chat, which is a damn good reason to have chat. I think you should be having chat because we have very little in this community of conversations amongst each other. I have no way to know what my guys sitting around me are thinking because you guys are addicted to this Zoom format, which leads to the next comment. Today, I was on a train with over 5,000 people at 185 degrees. No one was wearing a mask, and none of us were afraid. And most of those people were there last week, and most of those were there before the previous week. And there's been no indication on the part of Caltrain that not wearing masks or us being there together is causing any kind of problem. You would find it immensely valuable to reestablish having meetings in person. I know it's not convenient for you guys, but it really does serve a huge community purpose. I haven't met anybody new in this community for three years. All I do is hear the same crap from the same people that already agree with me. You know, so what good is that? So anyways, I'm probably running out of time. So in case no one got it, no more PowerPoint presentations. They are awful. They kill attendance. They kill your ratings. They are not good for anybody. Just put them in the package and read them off. Do not have a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if I can stress that enough. If I have any time left, I would use it up, telling you, no more PowerPoint presentations. Thank you.
We have another speaker, Kimberly Williams.
Hi, can you hear me? Hopefully. I just wanted to say that as Harvey mentioned and Robert mentioned, there are downsides to both. And I'm sort of agnostic at this point, but there is one thing I would say as a community member that is useful, is to be able to see how many participants and who is participating in the meeting. It just helps give you a better sense of who's out there and who's, you know, interested in what and how, you know, how many people are on and engaged. And I don't always have that sense as a community member when I don't see those names. I could be the only person, or I could be one of 500 people, and, you know, that's helpful. The other thing I would say is, and I attend a lot of different meetings, and they all have different ways of dealing with this. And I think there is some efficiency, something about efficiency to be said for keeping the chat and the comments, you know, in hand so that you don't go down a rabbit hole. And that does happen quite often at Midcoast Community Council meetings. I think the other opposite end of the spectrum is Pacifica City Council, which kind of bars everything. So maybe somewhere in the middle is a good way to land. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. And John? I don't see any other hands raised at the moment. I'd like to hear from staff, their perspective on, you know, alternative ways of conducting those things.
But thank you, Mayor. Yes, so some of the conversations that you're thinking about and having have also been considered by other agencies over the past two years. And the format that we are in now is really a culmination of trial and error and what's become best practice for majority of the cities in the state. Using the meeting feature versus the webinar feature just has a number of risks associated with it. There's no controls over who can speak, when they can speak, what they can say, what they can show, what they can share on the screen. There have been some pretty forward stories from around the state of issues that have arisen and why people have gone to the webinar format. Similarly, with the chat, there, anyone can say anything. There have been some pretty derogatory and forward remarks that, you know, then are now public record. And outside of that, when you have the chat feature in a Zoom meeting, it becomes part of the permanent meeting record. It is PRA-able. And it also creates inadvertently potential for potential Brown Act violations, you know, just in kind of the spirit of the chat without really giving it a second thought. So my advice would be to stick with the current format that we have as far as technology goes. Happy to make any changes to the agenda format itself, but my professional advice would be to maintain the webinar format without chat.
I'll also share, you know, the comments from both Mr. Olem and I believe it was Ms. Williams are not new comments. We've heard comments like this throughout the time period we've been using Zoom. And I think Ms. Williams kind of honed in on a couple of comments I've heard that are part of the driving force to a different approach, which is the ability to see who's in the room, which is something you can do at an in-person council meeting. You get to see who else is participating and engaging, and the ability to have some of those conversations directly. We're not aware of how to facilitate that under our current structure, but I think it's something we can continue to look into. And maybe there's not a regular feature in Zoom, but maybe there's something we could do to facilitate some of that. Obviously, we'd have to explore some of the legal complications that come along with that and technical complications, but definitely if that's the direction this council wants to go, those are things we could explore and continue to use, both during the time that we remain in this format and in the future when we go back in person, but may continue to offer some sort of hybrid option.
Vice Mayor had her hand up first. Deborah?
Yeah, I guess I'm not quite understanding. If we have the ability to see the audience, the attendees, and the panel on the screen, that does not mean that we have to hear them. It does not mean that they have to be seen should they choose not to use the video. We have that option currently. I could stay off video all night and not have you see my face. So I don't see the objection, those objections making sense. I understand about the chat. I think that's a totally different issue, and I am not convinced that opening the chat is a great idea. But I do like the idea, until we get back to in-person meetings, of being able to see everybody in the room and having everybody in the room being able to see everyone else. So that's my opinion.
So can you put your opinion into a recommendation or recommended approach? You're muted.
I don't know the technical terms for it. I would recommend that we get out of this particular Zoom format and use a format where everyone who is attending the meeting, whether there are panelists or an attendee from the public, can be shown, can choose to be on video or not, and that the muting is handled by the person on the panel who is running that that particular item.
I'm not sure I followed that part, but let's hear from Robert.
Yeah, well, first I wanted to check in with Councilmember Jimenez's early comment that some people might feel deterred if they're... I think you said on camera, but do you feel, Councilmember Jimenez, that would be an issue if someone decided not to actually put the camera on? And, you know, you could just have a phone number or name if they wanted to stay, you know, more anonymous. But that's probably a concern in that situation, or what do you think?
I think it would. I think it's a bit of concern to some of the participants, you know, some of the people in the audience to show camera.
And what if they didn't put the camera on, you know, and just...
I mean, it's possible. You know, that's something like Vice Mayor Penrose said, check if you have camera the whole meeting. But I still thinking about, you know, people you're trying to manage had to get into the Zoom meeting, then they're going to be able to work out off-camera, on-camera. Especially, we add more features to it. If anybody wants to see who's participating in the meeting, you can go to participants. You know, it gives you the list of names. You know, it gives you the list of names or the participants. We are the ones, you know, uh, the city staff, the presenters, uh, council members. We are the panelists, we are presenting to the community. Also, I don't think there is a need for us to see, you know, the faces of all the members of the community until we go into public meetings. That, uh, if you ask me, I think we, we go into public meetings, you know, we're going to lose a lot of our audience. The ones that are participating right now. It is, it has become easier for them. We have a lot of, have you, have you seen, you know, I checked the participants earlier. There are a lot of, a lot of moms in the meetings, the ones that are preparing, uh, dinner, uh, preparing for tomorrow. So they're not going to be able to leave their home to go to the, to the, to a public meeting. So yes, having the, the option, you know, being on camera, off camera. I mean, it will work for some people, but, uh, a percent of it is going to be a distraction for them and to be, then they're going to be in the meeting. You know, adding, so adding chat is a whole different thing. You know, Jessica provided great information, you know, about what's going on around the state, you know, uh, and other communities. So many things happen where you're able to see, you know, even if you don't say anything, you know, we can still read lips. You know, we can figure it out, you know, things could happen. So I'm trying to avoid that, you know, I think it's, it would be our best practice for, for us, in my opinion. So it'll be city staff, council members, presenters, on camera, everybody else off camera.
Great. No, thanks for elaborating on that. And I agree with what you said that I would definitely highlight. What Jessica said that, you know, there's reasons that it's the best practice based on a lot of experience in a lot of other cities. And, um, although maybe one member of the public found it entertaining folks to be able to chat and make disparaging remarks about council members wherever else. I don't think that's really what we're looking for in terms of, uh, you know, effective chat. So, um, yeah, so I agree that for now, um, I don't think I'd want to see a chat because I don't think it's the best practice. There's reasons for that. So, um, yeah.
You know, we might, maybe we can't discuss that right now. Maybe we have to agendize it separately, but, um, I, I think it's time to revisit, you know, whether or not we want to have in-person meetings. We've discussed previously having in-person meetings at the right time with a hybrid approach. So it's, you know, in-person or, or Zoom. And I, I think it would be premature to, uh, entertain this idea of chat until we see, can we work with the hybrid system? You know, just wrap our minds around that first, meeting in person, interacting with the Zoom, and, and postponing a decision, a decision about chat until after we master that. But I, I, I think it's important. First of all, I, I think the format is good as long as we break up those last two items like Joaquin mentioned, I think it was Joaquin, maybe Harvey, separating city council reports from future items. The rest of it I'm, I'm fine with. But, uh, I'm not comfortable with adding chat until we make a decision about how we're going to, you know, return to in-person meetings. You know, if we're going to return to in-person meetings. I think the chat would just complicate that transition. Maybe that's a decision left or after that. Yeah, if there's a way to allow people to see, you know, who, who's participating, I'd be in favor of that. And, uh, I, I like Joaquin's idea about, you know, panelists and, um, you know, staff to be visible and, and leaving people invisible, you know, for the time being, I can see that the sense that that makes. But anyway, this was a discussion of format. I thought I'd throw in chat because it had been raised by sufficient numbers of people, but, you know, we ought to have a discussion about it. So let's just take a, you know, a little bit of a straw poll here. You know, do you favor doing a pilot on chat at this time? And I'm going to start with Harvey.
I do.
Joaquin?
Uh, no, I don't.
Robert?
Uh, no, I don't.
Deborah? You're muted?
I do not.
And I don't either, but I'd be willing to entertain it, you know, at a later date. And how about, uh, trying out whether, you know, we can share the participant list under our current webinar system? Have staff take a look at that. Would that be interesting for people?
Would you repeat that, please?
So people had asked, you know, can we, um, set it up so that the people who are, you know, attending the meeting, you know, as attendees can see who else is in the participant table? You know, who are the panelists, who are the attendees?
You mean visually see them, not just a list of names, is that?
Yeah.
I'm just talking about the list of names.
The, the list of names exists now, my understanding.
Well, we can see that, but I don't think the attendees can.
The attendees don't have, uh, uh, access to that. I think that's part of the concern is for the general audience, they don't have any way to see who else is in the meeting, um, while they're watching the meeting. It's very, very limited.
Yeah, only panelists can view the attendee list. So what we could do is we could announce at the beginning of a meeting how many attendees are on. And that number does fluctuate throughout the evening. But outside of actually reading the list of names, I'm not sure how else we could get that information to public attendees.
I thi- I think there's some things we can talk about. I have some ideas, I don't know if they're technically possible. Um, and then of course, I think we have to explore the legalities of any of this. But, you know, there's some ideas I think we can kick around. One of, one of the things that we've talked about is staff is if there are some of these things you want to try out, you know, on a pilot basis, that a study session, a special meeting might be an appropriate place to do it where there's a specific topic. Everybody's there focused on that topic. And it just, it's a little bit different environment than our traditional council meeting. And maybe that's a place we could try some of these, um, different features as well. So just wanted to, want to put that out there as well. I'm not sure what we have coming up yet as far as study sessions, but that might be uh, an area where we could try some, some different formats and see, you know, what we like and what we don't like.
So maybe like a workshop or a study session, um, maybe one of our strategic listening sessions around budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that makes sense to me. And of course, you know, the whole purpose of those is to take as much comment as possible. So I, I would support, you know, piloting, um, you know, the chat function with, with those sorts of meetings. Yeah.
We're confusing things, I believe. One is whether we're going with a, what, you know, I think Zoom terminology says a meeting, and, and having the chat feature, I think is a separate issue. I, I don't want to, uh, juxtapose those two.
Could you clarify that for me?
Yeah, uh, in what Jessica was talking about was the fact that right now we run a webinar format. The, the alternative would be a meeting format. And in a meeting format, um, everybody can see all the participants who choose to keep their cameras on and know who's there. The, uh, the, the host can mute everybody. So I don't think the, uh, worry about people talking out of turn is relevant. But that's one thing we should talk about. The chat feature is separate, uh, as you've heard, I'm, I'm not in favor of it, but apparently, uh, the rest of the council isn't. That doesn't mean we can't go to a Zoom meeting format where the participants can see each other.
Okay, so why don't we just ask staff to bring back some information? You know, at a future meeting, meeting versus webinar, you know, what, what the functionality is for each? You know, so we can sort of, you know, understand the, the technology.
And just to clarify, in a meeting, you can turn the chat feature off. So it's not, in other words, it's not just turned off in a webinar, but you can turn it off in a meeting. And also just to clarify, in a meeting, again, you can turn your camera on or off. And there's ways to also not even necessarily have your name in there because you can sign on either, you know, just with a phone number or just anonymous, you know, whether or not you want to actually have your name on there. So there's a number of variables on there.
You know, it, it, there is some appeal to the meeting, you know, because sometimes, well, often, I would like to see the people who are addressing the council. You know, especially when the person who's talking is called Galaxy fifty-nine. You know, no, uh, no offense meant by that, but, um, total anonymity. You know, I'm not really comfortable with total anonymity. I think people should have that choice, but it would be great, you know, to be able to actually see faces. But I think we need a, you know, we need more information here before we, you know, we make the call. So staff can just work on that. That would be great. Bring back the comparison charts. That would be helpful.
Yes, I think we've got, we've got good direction. Uh, it doesn't sound like at this time we need to include the chat options for that. It's, it's more about being able to see the audience and see who's participating. And, uh, Jessica, is there any other questions you had? Obviously, you'd be heavily involved in, in this.
No, but I think the easiest way to explain it quickly is, you know, and I can put together comparison and whatnot, but in a webinar format, you have panelists and attendees. In a meeting format, everyone's equal. And while I can mute all participants and turn off video for all participants, I then would have to go through and select each participant to turn it back on for. And, you know, you just, you never know what you're going to get is the biggest issue there. But I can, I can put some information together.
Okay, that would be good. And then everybody's sort of good with the format except for separating out those last two items. That made sense to me. Okay, do we have any commission and committee updates?
Madam Mayor, we do. Uh, we had a recent, uh, Recreation Commission meeting, uh, a few weeks ago. And, um, I would say the, um, main topic that we covered was, um, talking about a potential art installation in, uh, in Hafn Bay through a donated piece of artwork created by a local artist. It was a really great conversation. This will be revisited with some additional details from staff, um, at the next commission meeting, uh, at the end of this month. And then likely a recommendation to bring this to council in, um, October. So lots of public art, which is very exciting. And, um, and just appreciate the, the work of the commission and the community members that brought that item forward. I also know we've had a recent, uh, Planning Commission meeting and our Community Development Director, Jill Eacus, will report on that.
Hi, good evening again. The last meeting of the Planning Commission was August twenty-third. At that meeting, the commission, uh, approved, uh, coastal development permits for two murals. One of the murals is, uh, one that council has already acted on, um, with regards to funding and moving it forward, which is the Pumpkin Festival, uh, fiftieth anniversary acknowledgement mural on the, uh, south side of the Cunha Market Building. The other mural is, um, proposed and, um, going to be coming forward soon, we hope, on the north side of, uh, the building that fronts on, uh, MacDutra Plaza. And this is a mural that is sponsored by Seacrest School. So it was a really interesting meeting to have, uh, two murals that will be framing, um, the MacDutra space. And this is something, uh, along council's priorities for, I think you've referred to it as greening, uh, MacDutra. This is a little bit, uh, but different approach to doing that, but with, again, the theme of art that Matthew was just noting. The, uh, commission also, uh, took action to deny the proposed, uh, variable message sign, proposed by Caltrans at the south end of town. The commission's next meeting, uh, regular meeting, uh, should be September thirteenth, but we have, uh, decided in agreement with the commission to cancel that meeting. We're working on a lot of large projects and, um, I think this is a, a good break for us to be focused on those. The Architectural Advisory Committee is going to be meeting, um, towards the end of September. We have a couple of single-family homes going to them. And, uh, we continue to have, uh, director approvals of, um, accessory dwelling units, uh, in compliance with state law. And so we just like to note that from time to time as well. And those are our updates. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. And, um, so are we already past the deadline for appealing the Caltrans sign?
We are not. There's another, another week.
Good to know. All right. Any other reports from staff? Okay, city council reports. Anybody ever reported out from a meeting? Harvey?
Well, I, I've gone to the Peninsula Clean Energy, uh, monthly meeting. They're working on reach codes, among other things. And it turns out that, uh, some of the power purchase agreements that have been made, have to be renegotiated because some of the, uh, providers can't stay in business with the current, uh, economic climate. I thought that was interesting. So, you know, rather than, uh, uh, default on the agreements, uh, the, like, Peninsula Clean Energy is going to have to pony up more money, um, which is too bad. That's my main thing that I learned this month.
Very interesting. So it's Sam, oh, I'm sorry, Joaquin?
Uh, I just want to share with you, um, that a group of us from Hafn Bay, uh, attended a rally in March, uh, Sacramento, uh, supporting advocacy for, uh, AB twenty-one eighty-three. And together with Senator Josh Becker. That was a couple, uh, a week and a half ago. We marched and, uh, were part of the rally.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about the bill that you were rallying for?
Yes, of course. So this will give the opportunity, uh, for farm workers, uh, to vote, to be part of a labor union. Uh, as you know, farm workers are being underrepresented, you know, in many different areas, including under the labor union. So this is, uh, with a request to the Governor Newsom, uh, to sign the bill, uh, AB twenty-one eighty-three that will give the opportunity, uh, for farm workers, uh, to vote.
And did that bill get out? Is it going to the governor's desk, you know?
It's on, it's on, it's still on his desk. We have, uh, Senator Baker is supportive of the, the bill. The, the governor has not signed it yet. So we are waiting for that.
Very good, very exciting stuff.
Yes, so a lot of people.
Thank you.
A lot of people from different unions, uh, there was presence, uh, from the state of California, uh, people from our state, actually, uh, in a lot of different unions that are supporting this bill.
Sounds like a very good bill.
Yes, it is.
Yep. It's Sam, uh, the board unanimously approved a contract with Integral Consulting to, uh, do an assessment of the sewer plant's vulnerability to flooding from Pillar Cidos Creek in the Kehoe Channel and from the ocean with, um, sea level rise and rising groundwater and also intense storms. So, um, you know, before we, you know, we're, we've already been investing the last few years heavily in infrastructure there. The electrical system is at risk. So, um, we've approved the study to really evaluate, go deeper than the county's vulnerability assessment, to really take a hard look at where the, where the risks are and, and where, you know, infrastructure is, is most at risk and might need to be moved. So that study is going to take about a year because they have to do a lot of data gathering and modeling and things like that. But the end of it, we'll have a pretty good, you know, picture of, uh, you know, what needs to be done there, what's at risk and, uh, and go from there to identify, uh, you know, priority projects and develop, you know, costs. So that was the, the big deal at Sam recently. So that was the, the big deal at Sam recently. And the very, like CKG has, has not had much in the way of agendas or meetings at all because of summer vacations. So I don't have anything to report there. And One Shoreline hasn't had meetings in a couple of months as well. So that's my report. Anybody else? Okay, well, we can adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody, for making it a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you soon. Bye-bye.